We'll call the meeting to order. Rule call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Ahman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dawkin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlick.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Would you please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Proposed additions or additions to the agenda? I don't know if we can or not, but we will. We'll try. Can we move number nine to number seven and a half?
You're in charge as the presiding officer, sir.
Yeah, we can. Yes. We can do that.
We can do it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we will do it. We'll move numbers nine to number seven and a half after the scheduled hearings. Concerned items, do we have approval on the concerned items?
Move to approve.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the concerned items as written. Do we have any discussion? All those in paper say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll move right into the scheduled hearings. Bruce, do you want to take that?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council. Short while ago, Gus Wardell purchased the former Regency East Mobile Home Park. Following that acquisition, Mr. Wardell requested tax abatement for the city's portion of real estate taxes for a 10-year period to assist with redevelopment costs. Plans for the property include bringing in all-new residential structures, making infrastructure improvements, making recreational improvements, screening improvements, and I believe a new storm shelter as well. Prior to establishing the public hearing date, the committee and council had a chance to see the one, five, and 10-year cash flow projections for the facility. From those cash flow projections, it was pretty obvious that it's going to take this project a while to gain steam and bring any type of profitability to the developer. For those reasons, it's a recommendation of staff that the council approve a 10-year tax abatement for the city portion in an amount not to exceed $25,000 aggregate over the 10-year period. And Mr. Wardell is here tonight, and he and I would be willing to stand for questions.
At this point, I will open it to the public hearing. Is there any questions or comments for Mr. Peterson or Mr. Wardell? At that point, I will close the public hearing and open it to the council. Are there any questions for Mr. Wardell or Mr. Peterson? Councilman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution granting the full tax abatement for 10 years, not to exceed $25,000.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to... Go ahead.
That would include the approval of the tax abatement agreement, which went out with your packets as well, and that just spells out the framework for the 10-year tax abatement and provides some targets for Mr. Wardell to hit with development prior to 2018.
Thank you. Councilman Dawkin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, you used the term "it'll take a while to gain some steam." What does that mean?
A property like this has, for lack of a better term, been neglected for a long time. There's somewhat of a negative image that goes with that property. There's a real mess on the site, again, for lack of a better term. It's going to take Mr. Wardell a while to bring his concept to the people, to gain traction with the people, and to achieve the sales that are anticipated, and that was all reflected in the cash flow projections. I have every confidence that it will be done, but it's not something that's going to happen in one or two years. It's going to take a number of years to build that park back up to full occupancy with a much higher-quality structure than we've seen in the park for a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like just to thank Mr. Wardell for what he's doing, bringing good housing in for those residents that that's what their desire, and kind of cleaning up an area of town that's been kind of an eyesore. So, we want to thank you for what you're doing for the community.
Councilman DeBlick.
The same, that property has been, you could say, neglected for a number of years. Thank Mr. Wardell for taking on the project and bringing in some higher-quality housing in for residents of the park and future residents of the park.
From a technical assistance standpoint, staff will continue to assist as we're able in the redevelopment of that park.
Would you reread the motion?
Make a motion to adopt the resolution granting the tax abatement and approving the developer agreement, which for 10 years, not to exceed $25,000 total, be $2,500 per year.
Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to point out that it, along with some tax abatement help from the city government, that the private sector and Mr. Wardell is stepping forward and helping out with, we call, affordable housing. Too many times, we rely on government to supply that money. Well, here we have a gentleman that sees some future profit in it, and it's the private sector stepping up and helping warmer with affordable housing.
Is there any further discussion? We make a resolution, adopting the resolution granting the tax payment and approving the development agreement in the amount of $25,000, no more than $25,000?
Not to exceed $25,000.
Resolution.
Rule call.
Rule call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ahman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries... We'll move into the...
Truth and taxation.
Truth and taxation. Charlene, do you want to talk to us about that?
Yes, I can just give you a summary of... Truth and taxation is required by Minnesota law to conduct a public hearing, which is commonly known as truth and taxation. The county auditor has mailed out the tax statements to individuals showing the effective tax rates for the coming year, and the notice includes an estimate of how much the property tax bill will either increase or decrease, as well as the time and date of the public hearing. We've also properly advertised this evening's hearing. Just to remind folks, a little bit of the financial picture of the city's 2015 budget. We saw relatively flat revenues, a minimal increase in local government aid, a small increase in valuation, and we saw some increasing costs from infrastructure maintenance, aging infrastructure, as well as deferred costs. The budget calendar, we started our budget process, it says there in August, but we actually start the work of preparing budget documents as early as June and July. Mayor presented his recommended budget and CIP to the city council back in August, August 14th. Finance Committee has been working since then on the mayor's proposed budget. August 25th, they set the proposed property tax levy. It was set at the maximum amount it could be. The council has until this evening to lower that tax levy. The council held a couple of workshops in September, October, and then also in November, and we are here this evening, December 1st, to consider adoption of the budget, and then December 31st would be the certification of the tax levy to the county. In terms of the 2015 proposed budget, the general operating budget is currently proposed at a little over $15.6 million. Capital improvements, just under $2 million, 1.949. Special revenue and internal funds at 1.7 million, almost 1.8 million. Debt service, 2.7, and then the enterprise fund, which is our wastewater treatment, at almost 11.2 or 11.3. And then the total of all funds is $33,391,396 for 2015. The proposed operating levy, and this was discussed by the city council, acting in workshop with the Finance Committee last November 18th. The proposed general fund operating budget, or general fund property tax levy for 2015 is $4.304,028, and the street program, $147,000, and that represents a proposed increase of $250,000 over the 2014 property tax levy. And at that same meeting, it was proposed that $250,000 be used to repay some funds that had been borrowed for the city auditorium. And with that, I think it would be appropriate to take any public comment at this time or any discussion from the city council.
We do have... We open up the hearing to the public if there's any public comment. Hearing done, I will open it up to the council.
Can I...
I'll enter as first resolution.
Okay. I'll second that.
Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The revisions to the general fund budget, the number one on there is increase the property tax levy by $250,000. Did we not designate that for something other than paying back the revolving loan fund?
My... The minutes and my recollection of the Finance Committee was that it was to be used to repay the revolving loan fund. You can certainly change that action, or if I'm incorrect, the council can make that correction.
I remember in the discussion, we talked about levy increase to help improve our street maintenance originally. This is when we first began, and you mentioned the $250,000. I'm wondering where that went. I mean, we were all on board with improving road or street maintenance, and I understood it to go toward that.
Councilman Anderson.
There was discussion early on about streets, and we had some proposals on that, but when I made the recommendation, I specifically said that at that meeting, that I propose $250,000 the first year ago to repaying the one fund, and then the next year, the other fund. I don't know that that's necessarily the way that it was passed, I think, but that was my intent when I did that.
May I?
Go ahead.
You know, taking the money from the Public Improvement Revolving Fund and the Insurance Reserve, is it law that that has to be paid back? I didn't understand it that way. I understood we were taking it from it to use the auditorium.
By the city's policy, the Public Improvement Revolving Fund has to be paid back within five years. So, we had originally proposed to pay it back $50,000 a year out of the capital improvements, and we can certainly go back to that. And then the Insurance Reserve, again, I think it's just a practice of what the city council had set as the level to keep that at, and that we intended to repay that with the insurance dividends over the course of a number of years.
I know, I had brought up at one point in time at one of the meetings that we use the unspent funds from, you know, the previous year for maybe paying those back instead of raising the tax levy, because every year we have... There's money there in funds that haven't been spent, mostly from the capital improvement program, but I did understand this to go to the streets, because we're all concerned about it. I don't know how the rest of the members feel.
Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, my understanding was also that this money would be used for the streets. And I was, I mean, I was pretty adamant in some of the early discussions that, you know, we put some real limits on that to make sure that the money went for the streets. I'm sorry if this went by me. I apologize for missing it to the taxpayers, but I think it should go for the streets.
Councilman Dawkin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I talk a lot about minutes. Are you telling me that nowhere in our minutes does it indicate, in previous minutes, that that, those unspent funds would go specifically to streets?
It does not. There were discussion on that, and then, again, at the November 18th finance committee council workshop, that was the understanding the finance director and I had. If that's incorrect, you can certainly change that action this evening. I mean, it's, you know, the budget is not adopted until you do so by resolution. So, you can certainly do that. You can set the property tax levy as part of this resolution. You can adjust it from $147,000 to $297,000 towards streets and do that as part of your action of setting the property tax levy, and then we can make the adjustments on the budget corresponding in the next resolution. That certainly can be done.
Councilman Nelson.
I think we've been discussing this, at least the first time I heard it, was to pay back that reserve, to not do the $50,000 a year. We also had a discussion at the last finance meeting, very specifically on streets, and the amount that we were spending and whether we were going to leverage that and do anything additional, and we chose not to. In fact, the amount that's in the street budgets, I believe, is a little more than what had actually been laid out for streets to do, because I know I asked the question, are we going to do anything additional, because we've been complaining how far we are behind with streets? And nothing was said. And from the very beginning, this gives us the opportunity to pay back that loan and not have to find $50,000 out of the budget for five years, because we also have another $250,000 to pay back. So, I'm confused with why, all of a sudden, we think it needs to do the streets, because we had the street discussion and set that. That's already in these minutes also. I think it was very clear that the $250,000 was going to be used to pay back that loan.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson.
You know, the other thing that I think we talked about in that $250,000 was that ultimately that money would be available for maintaining the buildings and things like that on deferred maintenance, and I really don't recall that this would be used for streets. And to follow up on Councilmember Nelson, we had a discussion at that meeting also about the possibility of using the $147,000 as principal and interest payment on a million or million and a half dollar bond, but we opted not to do that. That was the discussion on the streets that I remember.
Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the reason I bring it up is we're increasing the levy, in other words, taxes, taxpayers, and to use it to pay back a fund that we're using to fund the auditorium improvements, I thought we weren't going to raise taxes to do that. I mean, if we were raising them, it was... My feeling all along is it was to go to the streets if we were going to raise taxes. And I don't know what the rest of you were thinking on that, but I do recall the conversation at the last budget meeting and the street improvement plan and the one that our engineer brought forward was a little over $3 million, $3,500,000, and he had budgeted several hundred thousand dollars more than that. So, there's some money there to help with additional streets improvement, but I'm not for raising taxes to pay back something when we have the money there for it. I mean, every year, we have unspent funds, and we're basically raising taxes to help pay back for some of the improvements to the auditorium, and we don't need to do that. We don't have to do that.
Mayor Yanish.
Councilperson Nelson.
I'd just like to seek clarification, because we had this discussion also before, about what that money that's in the budget from previous years and how it gets used in the capital improvement. So, I think we have to review that again. I think we've reviewed it twice already, but I'd like to hear staff explain where that money goes and why we wouldn't do that as suggested.
It is programmed, for instance, for 2015, the unspent dollars or reserve or surplus from 2013 is programmed into the 2015 operating budget, and I believe that number is about $500,000 this year. It is already programmed into the operations of the 2015 budget. And the 2014, what would be at the end of this year, in 2014, unspent reserves would typically be programmed into 2016, because until the year is completed, until all bills are paid and audited and such, we don't have that dollar amount. And so, it would be available in the next budgeting cycle of 2016. That is how it has been allocated and used. And so, for 2015, we have already programmed that number into the operations, capital transfers, et cetera, so it's already being spent for 2015.
Thank you. Just a little confused, I wasn't at the 11-18 finance meeting, but it's also stated in that minutes that the $250,000 that you're raising is for the auditorium project, to be, pay back the money that was borrowed from the fund, the investment fund for that. And that's minutes we just approved. So, why are we discussing putting the $250,000, that $250,000 increase into streets? You know, streets are important, but they're not that important. I think it's important to repay the money that we spent in 2014 on the auditorium. You know, streets are kind of... As I think one of the calculations, it was $63 million we'd have to put in the streets to bring everything up to par. You're kind of like a dog chasing its tail. When you have that, you can always put money in the streets. It isn't a problem to spend money on them, but I don't think we need to have streets that are all pothole-free within the city. We're going to have streets that are going to be in that 10% range, 20% range, 30, 40, 50, all the way up to the 100% range. I think for the life of things, we just need to make sure we keep streets in a well enough repair to keep traffic moving on them. So, and the other thing, when you spend money on streets, the city's only paying 25% of the reconstruction. You're going out and assessing another 75%, and you always wind up, when we have our assessment hearings, you have people come in there and fill the auditorium, and then you change the project and don't go ahead and do the project. You cancel it out and don't go ahead and fix the streets the way it is anyway. So, why don't we repay the money that we've already spent on the auditorium?
Councilwoman Nelson.
Yes, I know that someone on the council requested the pavement management plan to be sent out to them, and I think Mr. Christensen, Sean, did an excellent job talking about that, and I believe if the analysis is correct, and I would ask him to speak to that. Our streets are in better condition now with the ones that we're doing than they were a few years ago, and if we stay with this pavement management plan, we will get caught up in that. I'd just like to seek clarification of that, because I've asked at multiple meetings, are we going to accept the pavement management plan? And we agreed at the last, at the Finance Committee meeting to stay with that amount and to stay the course and with all of that information. So, I'd like to hear from him again, where he thinks we are with streets and what needs to be done, because I heard clearly that we were on track, and if we stay the course, we can get this done.
Sean, go ahead.
Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. I hopefully am getting better at explaining that pavement management plan to the council and others that have asked and inquired about that. We are better than we were five years ago and we were 10 years ago, as the charts I presented at previous council meetings indicate. We continually do the evaluation, the pavement condition index on these streets, on all the 130 miles of streets we have in town, and we continually do that, no more than every couple of years. So, we're continually monitoring that in those streets, and with the additional, we do have an additional $250,000 programmed into the 2015 budget, the capital improvement plan budget, and as you saw in one of the other charts I gave you or graphs I gave you, we don't have a problem spending that, to try to maintain that.
Thank you. You know, Councilmember Christensen, you rightfully pointed out, I think, at the council meeting, or Finance Council meeting, that looking at the 15 budget projects for streets, there was some $300,000 or $400,000 in excess over the estimate versus what was going to be in the budget, and I think you were suggesting that maybe we should use that money and bid a larger project. So, you know, I'm thinking that we've got enough money going into streets.
Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My beef here is raising taxes to fix the auditorium, and I don't think we have to. Okay, that's my beef. I mean, I don't think we should raise taxes when we don't have to, to fix that auditorium. We can find that $250,000. We seem to find it every year for other projects, and our capital improvement plan is always and has an excess at the end of every year, as does the utilities and the hospital, because all those dollars aren't spent. And I know that we automatically put them two years later into the budget and the general fund. It's just been automatic for years, but we can designate some funds, unspent funds, for paying this back. I just don't like increasing taxes to fix that auditorium. And that's basically what we're doing here. It doesn't sound like anybody else is against that, except for myself and Mr. Johnson. So, I'll go on to my next item that I have here. Item number four is, it says we've increased our utility cost by $17,500 to account for a potential 4% to 5% rate increase from the utilities. I've read in the paper that it's going to be more than that, 16, 17, 18, up to 24% increase. So, what are we doing with the 4% to 5% rate increase?
I think some of them were, in terms of water, higher. Some of the others were lower, and so, we also felt if we increased that number, you know, in that kind of range, and again, assuming that that rate increase would not take place the first of the year, that we would have an adequate budget item there.
So, we feel that 4% to 5% is adequate, that we...
Yes.
Basically, you're saying?
Yes.
Even though they tell us that it's going to maybe be 16, 17%?
We think that this will, that we will be all right with this.
Okay, and then I have one other item if I may.
It's an estimate.
Sure, go right ahead.
Number six, says we've reduced the carryover fund by $125,000 to account for the purchase of the Zamboni. That carryover fund, what that should state, that's unspent funds also, correct?
Correct. That was, if you look back to the proposed mayor's budget of 2000, that was submitted in August, there was an assigned balance or a carryover of $645,517. That has been reduced to $520,517, and that's based on the previous action the council took to spend some of those dollars on the Zamboni.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion, Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
I'm going to comment just briefly on the concern of pavement management, and like I told you, Sean, thanks for being on board. Now, we're without a city engineer for a while, and it's good to have the numbers finally in front of us, and I don't want to beat my drum too much, but I'm very concerned about the current condition of our streets. Not only the conditions, that we can deal with that and the replacement program with the taxpayers participating in that process, but according to the city engineer's information that I received from him on cost to just reseal coat our city streets, which, according to the information we all received from him, should be done once every two years, depending on the usage of the street, of course, and the letter that I sent out to all of you showing the breakdown of seal coating, 63.25 miles is going to cost us $33,000 per mile. It'll cost us $2,087,0250 overlay of 27 miles. This is to get things back up to its current standards of everything being in perfect condition, which I understand with Mr. DeBlick is not possible. You know, if we had the ability to bring everything up to current standards, make everything perfect, it would cost us $65 million. So, you get 27 miles overlay at $8,775,000. Then in the overlay alone, we're looking at 16 and three-quarter miles, or $325,000 per mile, and that comes up to $5,443,750. To rebuild another section of road is 24.5 miles, we're looking at $2 million per mile. That's total reconstruction. That's what we're looking at, $49 million. This is what we have to look forward to in the future. A lot of road expenses, a lot more roads, and how we're going to pay for them. But my point isn't simply, and I've... But my point isn't simply, and I think I've, I know where everybody's coming from here. We want to maintain what we have, but what people mainly want is they want good roads. They want their street plowed and swept, and keep your taxes in good shape. Get rid of the potholes. And city services as they seem necessary. But when there are streets that have not been seal coated in this community, for 15 years, we have neglected our responsibility. And actually, the taxpayers are paying for their, are paying more money to have their street fall apart quicker, because we, the city council and this authority, have not been seal coating our streets. Instead, we found other projects to spend best our money in. This clearly is not the way you'd maintain your home. And when you look at these numbers, the reason why I sent it out to all you people was because it just, it just really shocked me. It's like, this is a reality, folks. And we have to deal with it maybe in the five-year plan, in the 10-year plan, but we're still looking at $65 million less the cost of the homeowner is paying for part of the reconstruction overlay. But even if we're looking at $50 million, where are we going to get it? How are we going to afford it? Just keep raising taxes? We have to think smarter. We're not, we're not seal coating our streets. By not seal coating it, the streets wear out quicker. The investment that the property owners and the city of Wilmer put into that street are deteriorating at a quicker rate than they would if we didn't seal coat them. And we're not seal coating them. So we're talking about $250,000. Not a lot of money when you look at the size of that budget. But that money should be invested back into the pockets of the taxpayers. Their streets in front of their house, so we don't have to hit them up again five years earlier to reconstruct their street, and they're going to be paying five to six times more for that. We have not addressed this issue. We keep stumbling around it. I've asked for a specific session on it. We talk about it. We don't have the data. We can't discuss it intelligently. That's why I put this letter out to you folks, and I just think it's something we need to really concentrate on, not just kick the can down the road anymore. It's, it's serious business. And then we have all kinds of other requests coming in, from the 2040 plan to all kinds of great visionary people who have good ideas for a better community, but it's going to cost us money. Even though it's $250,000, I would much rather that go into the back pockets of the streets, all of our streets, and help that street maintain its longevity, so we don't have to pay it again. And by doing this, I think Ron and Tim are right on. It's $250,000. If you talk to people that I talk to, they'd say, why aren't you doing it? Why hasn't my street been seal coated? Why are there cracks all over the place? It deteriorates out my, my street quicker. The report that Sean gave us shows us that. We're not engineers, but based on the information he gave us, I believe him. And it makes sense, talking to other paving contractors, too. I'll let it go at that, but I think we're not putting enough money into our streets. And I'll just leave it at that case. How we go about that tonight, I'm open to any suggestions. Thank you.
Counselman Nelson.
I'd just like to ask Sean again to respond to that we haven't been seal coating, because the seal coating is part of the plan. And I'd just like to hear his comments about the, that things haven't been done for 15 years and some of those. And if there's some catching up to do, I think that was part of the conversation though last week, about spending some of that extra money to make sure that we are not allowing the streets to do, to break down, which is what this council did this last year by not following the pavement management plan. So I'd like to hear from Sean.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Nelson. I think everyone's talking partly correct, from what I've done the research on. And there are some streets, yes, that have not been maintained and have not had anything done in 15 years. The last few years, or at least since, maybe since Mel left, we've been doing what we can with the seal coat. And the seal coat itself is, should be about a seven to eight year process, and, or done every seven to eight years, rather. Where we, where we've kind of fallen behind in my mind is by not doing the overlays, which we did undo or not do last year. And that's where we've actually really fallen behind on a lot of these streets. And unfortunately, those streets that are in the overlay, or in need of an overlay, will soon be in need of a reconstruct. So, seal coat, we've done better job of, but my feeling is we need to do some of the overlays and catch them before they get into the fail mode, or fail state.
Thank you, Sean. Is there any further discussion?
Well, just two different things. One, sir.
Counselman DeBleek.
Just like to point out, I think Sean did make the statement that our streets are in better condition now than what they were five years and even 10 years ago. Is that correct?
Councilmember DeBleek, that's, that is correct, based on a general view of the 130 miles. If you remember the charts that I provided, I've got, I've got, I've got graphs. Every, about every five years, it does a bar chart on how many miles of each category, if you will, of streets exist in the, in the city. And we are getting less of the reconstruct category and more of the top category, if you will, the good to best category.
It seems to me that, you know, we're staying even, or staying relatively level with our street repair with the amount of money that we've been putting into it. But you look at our buildings and our parks, we have not put any money into those facilities whatsoever over the last 15, 10 to 15 years. We've got, you know, we've got a report that our Civic Arena is going to probably need a $2 million. With improvements and repair of the HVC systems out there, and some insulation and roofing. You've got the auditorium, we, there's still a number of improvements that can be made there. We've got parks with equipment that's 40 years old, don't meet standards, current standards. You know, our buildings and our structures, our city hall is 50, 60 years old, hasn't been updated or renovated in that amount of time. There's many, many places that, that money can be spent, and to maintain the infrastructure for the city residents.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I want to simplify my comments. The seal coating of $2 million at 63.25 miles is, is money that we, we take care of our own seal coating. This is above and beyond what we're going to have to assess for, for improvements. So we're looking at every, every one to three, four years, or three years to seal coat our streets, we're still looking at over a million dollars, or $1.2 million approximately, to seal coat our streets on an average every, every four years. And we're not doing that. That's my point. We are not putting the money into the street that the people are paying their tax dollars for, to what we should be taking care of. That, along with Mr. Blake's comments, I stand and recognize each and every one of them, and I'm fully aware of that. Also, it's a fact, if we were, if we were not aware of those deteriorations and those things that were falling apart, we weren't able to, but we're not able to budget for them. In this case, the auditorium was a surprise. So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Counselman Dawkin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the Public Works Director a direct question. Are we on schedule for seal coating through 2014, or are we not?
Councilmember Dawkin, we are on schedule for seal coating. But that's about the only one we're on schedule for.
Okay, thank you.
Counselman Johnson.
Yeah, I would like to, I guess, supplement Councilmember DeBleek's remarks, and some of my concerns about the things he mentioned, the auditorium, Civic Center, and I would add to that, the Community Activity Center, which I mean, I think you included, really in your remark of our, just our buildings in general. We've neglected the upkeep of those buildings. There's just no doubt in my mind. I've talked to our past employees that were connected with those buildings, and the requests for needed maintenance and repairs have been, you know, we've just kind of put them aside, and basically we've shifted money around in our capital improvements budget quite a bit, and I think at an almost accelerated pace of late. And, you know, we're going to have to, pretty soon, we're going to get the bill for that. We can't, I mean, I think staff's doing a good job of doing that, but it's going to catch up to us. Budgeting in that manner is just not a good practice, and whether it's the streets or our buildings and some of these other things. But we have neglected a lot of the infrastructure in the community. And, and I've been here when some of that's been going on, and I'm as responsible as the rest of us, as the rest of you. I just think we're, we're going to, there is going to be a bill to pay one of these days, and our, some of these buildings are, we're going to get a, we get a surprise, another surprise like the auditorium, and we just took a million dollars from capital improvements that was earmarked for the auditorium, borrowed the money from other places, and then used that million for the industrial park, because we were, underestimated the costs out there. So, you know, you keep doing, you can only do that so long.
Do we have any further comments? Where are we at as far as the motion goes?
We have a resolution and a second to adopt the levy, as printed, printed that's handed out would be the correct copy.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2015. All those in favor say aye. Go ahead.
I think it's the levy, it's not the budget. We're doing the levy now. We're doing the budget.
It's two resolutions. You must first set the levy and then adopt the 2015 budget.
We're going to do this one first.
Okay, we'll do the levy first. All those in favor say aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
A roll call, I'm sorry. A roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd introduce a resolution adopting the budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2015. A roll call. Discussion.
Is there any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion.
I don't know if there is, but I think you need to call for it.
A discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Mayor, I've got, this is the budget. A line item can move from one area to the other to address any concern that comes up. Again, it's just a budget. It's the total money that we're dealing with that we have to, that we have to work with. So, as far as the street issues, if there's something else that wants to be done at another time, and the, and the issues can be shown, I think that money can be, can be reallocated very, very quickly if we wanted to put it back in the streets.
That is correct, Councilmember Ammon. It is a budget. It is a working document. It can be, you know, items can be changed at later date if the council wishes to do so.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. We'll move into the consideration of the override of mayor or veto regarding 2015 funding for community groups. The city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and members of the council. I apologize for the interruption. My recommendation, because you have representatives of the groups that are affected by the resolution and the veto, and the possibility that the veto may be overridden, present here today, willing to speak, my recommendation would be that you take this matter up after the open forum, as indicated on the agenda. Having said that, I want to at least clarify something, and there's been some confusion, including by me, about the effect of the veto of the community group funding resolution. And I just want to make sure, before you move to the open forum, everyone understands what the consequence of the veto is. And Mr. Mayor, you had attached a statement to your veto as the charter states you're required to do. And in your statement, you stated that the reason you vetoed the resolution is because the funding amounts for the four groups listed were in excess of, in excess of the amounts that you'd proposed in your budget. And then you listed alternative amounts for each of the four groups that in three of the four cases are lower than the amounts that the council set in the resolution you vetoed. And the other, in the fourth case, the amount stayed the same. Part of the confusion, I think, was that the amounts that you specifically listed in your statement, in your veto statement, were different than the amounts that you had originally proposed in your budget. Before this meeting, I asked you if the amounts listed were the amounts that you wanted to reduce the expenditures to, and you indicated to me that that's the case. So that in vetoing this resolution, what you intended to do was reduce the amounts listed in the council-passed resolution to the amounts you have listed specifically in your statement. The result of that would be that the Humane Society funding would be reduced from the council-authorized amount of $28,800 to $28,000 even. That the amount authorized for Meals on Wheels by the council of $19,200 would be reduced to $15,000. That the amount authorized by the council for Wilmer Downtown Development, Inc., the amount of $37,000, be reduced to $20,000. And that the amount for Wilmer Fest of $25,000 would remain unchanged. So, that would be the case, if the council does not override your veto on the next agenda item, those amounts would be the funding amounts for 2015. The council will have the opportunity to override your veto and restore the higher amounts in those three cases in the agenda item.
I'd like to make a statement, if I may.
Absolutely.
I made a mistake. As hard as that is for people to remain, to think about, I did make a mistake. I thought I was vetoing the increase only, the increase only, but found out I could not do that. So I am asking the council to override my veto. This means there will be an increase in funding for the programs mentioned. End of statement.
So, my recommendation, Mayor, is that you have the open forum first, and then take up this agenda item. And as I stated, what's before the council is the opportunity to override your veto and restore the higher amounts. If the council fails to override the veto, the specific amounts that you have listed in your veto statement would be the amounts. They would not be zeroed out. So there was confusion, in part caused by me, with some advice I gave last week in reviewing the charter. You do have the authority to simply reduce line item expenditures in a budget resolution, and I'm interpreting your veto statement to be trying to do that.
I am trying to do that, yes.
And that, that will be given effect if the council does not override your veto. The amounts you've listed in your veto statement would stand, and the groups would be funded in those amounts. But with that, I would recommend you have the open forum first, and then take up this agenda item.
With that, we should move into the open forum?
All right, Mr. Mayor, then I'll clarify one more point. Not everybody on this open forum may be speaking to this item, but we should go down the list if we're going to follow the open forum.
Okay.
All right. I'll read them from here.
Sure.
Well, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
A question for our attorney. What's the reason, why, why couldn't we override the veto right now? Is there a state statute that says we can't do that?
There's no statute, Councilmember, that says you can't do it. It's just, on the published agenda, you had the open forum first. I know that, just from talking to staff, that several representatives of the affected groups are here and plan to speak to it.
But I guess if your intent is to override the veto and restore the funding, then perhaps those individuals would not need to speak. I think it's just what your intent is, and whether you want to...
Well, it's to save time and agony and whatever else, angst, I mean. So you're saying we can't? Is that what you...
No, you can.
You can.
You can do it.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to override his veto.
Second.
And Mr. Dawkin?
Okay. The motion has been made, and second is to override the veto of the mayor.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The motion carries. We'll go to the open forum. Is there someone scheduled to speak, that wants to speak?
I'll read them off, Mr. Mayor, and they may just bow out, but I'll read them off one at a time.
Okay, sure.
Bobby Bowman. Kristy Kurth.
Mary Annish, members of the city council, city staff, and residents of Wilmer. I'm Kristy Kurth, the board chairman for West Central Industries, which operates the Meals on Wheels program. I just want to say thank you. I've had personal conversations with many, many of you over the last few days, as well as exchanged voicemails. And I appreciate you, Mary Annish, taking responsibility and saying that you are sorry that you made a mistake and thank the council for their action that they just made. The Meals on Wheels program appreciates the support that the city council has continued to give throughout the years to the program for residents here in Wilmer and the surrounding areas. So, thank you.
And I might add that we do appreciate the Meals on Wheels program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dale Eddy. James Miller.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'd like to speak actually from two hats. First of all, from Wilmer Fest and the Board of Directors. We would like to thank you as well for the funding. We believe that Wilmer Fest is a great celebration of our city and continues to be. We're very excited and look forward to our 70th celebration this coming June. The other hat I'd like to speak from is from United Way of West Central Minnesota. And as one of the funding agencies for Meals on Wheels, we do appreciate, again, to your funding of that. That is a program that's been very near and dear to my heart. I've had an opportunity to deliver numerous times. And it's funny, I tell this story a lot, that we have the opportunity to go out and deliver a group of meals that is supposed to take us half hour, 45 minutes. And it's amazing, every time we do it, it takes us more than an hour, maybe two hours sometimes, after a couple cups of coffee and an opportunity to look through a photo album. It really is an important program. It really is an opportunity, not only for the meal, obviously, but also for that social interaction for many of our seniors and those with disabilities. So, I appreciate and thank you for your honesty and candidness and, again, restoring that funding to those two great programs and the other programs that are on the docket, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Score.
This doesn't pertain to that, but I want to say way to go, Frank. I know it's pretty humbling to admit when you make a mistake, but that's what it's all about. People do make mistakes and I give you credit for doing that. I just want to talk a little bit on the Wilmer Utilities. That was in the paper, the article by Dave Little. There was a little bit of clarification between Charlene and Ron here earlier, but, you know, I gotta go with what's, I don't always believe what's in the paper, but it says, the recommendation to increase the rates 4.5 percent and the water rates 20 percent, both in 2015. You know, there was a utility connection fee that was mentioned early on this year. I'm wondering if that's included in that. The other thing is that there's just so much stuff thrown in here. If Wilmer wants to keep up with replacing the aging infrastructure, current revenue is not adequate. But then it goes towards the back. It says, says capital improvement, improvement plans are fairly significant, so revenue needs of both water and electric to a large extent are driven by the capital improvement plans. Here, again, it's the spending, not that the two, the water and the utility rates are not sufficient to support themselves. It's all this spending that needs more money. Again, when are we gonna back off on some of this spending? The budget for 2015 is $33 million, and you guys have been talking about a lot of money already. And here, we got more increase and then a new office, headquarters, and garage for the utility department, $8 million plus dollars. You know, again, I don't know how much the residents of Wilmer can absorb. Another 20, let's see, in the last five years, it was 36 percent increase water and sewer rates on our utility bill. Now, another, if I can go by this, I know what Charlene said and what Ron were talking about earlier, it's not quite that much, but that's another 25 percent. The jobs in Wilmer can't support that. People live check by check. I'm on a fixed income. I'm retired. I don't get a 25 percent COLA, cost of living adjustment. I mean, you know, this, we gotta watch this spending. It just doesn't make sense. Now, isn't the quality of life, isn't that part of utilities? I would think so. You know, we need to look this over really hard and make sure that the money that we want is reasonable and going for the right cause, not just because somebody wants a new building or wants this or that. You gotta think about the people that live check to check. Please think it over hard. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Carol Almer.
Not at this side.
Steve Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Steve Gardner, 2645 19th Avenue Southwest. First, I want to thank Mary Annish for his service to the city and Councilmember DeBlick, my friend as well. I appreciate your service as well. I appreciate the council's action to override the veto. I stand as an outgoing board member of the Candy Ojai Meeker County Humane Society, operating the Hot Creek Animal Shelter. Many of you, we see year in and year out over at the Save Our Tails banquet every February. We will serve a record number of animals coming through the shelter this year, over 1,700. The need is exceptionally great. We're 20 percent over the average for City of Wilmer animals, and we have not seen an increase in this budget item for, forever. In fact, when LGA was cut, we absorbed some of that for you as well. It's an important service that the shelter does for the city. If budgets are truly moral documents, this is one piece of that. We help provide a better city, a safer city, by providing these services. And certainly, I believe the city would pay far more and get far less if they were to undertake this on their own, if the shelter, if the shelter wasn't there. I had a nice conversation earlier this summer with Councilmember Christensen about just this subject, what the shelter does for the, for the community. And I appreciate very much your support. We're coming to the end of our budget year. If we didn't have the funds that we were counting on from you, that would have been a tough nut for us to crack. But we're looking at our year-end giving, and certainly, if anyone wants to help us out with that, they can check us out at thehskc.com or come on out. Everybody's always welcome to come out to the, to the shelter and be more than happy to give you a tour and show you what it is that we're doing for the city and for Candy Ojai and Meeker Counties. Thank you.
Ron Adams. He's gone, huh? Jim Peterson.
Thank you. Sorry, I prepared quite a little to say tonight, but I'm sure glad I don't have to say it. Anyway, I did want to just come back up here again and thank you, too, for, for overriding the veto and Mr. Mary Annish for your, for your work. Bobby Bowman and I, and I'm just going to read a little bit that I'd written. Bobby Bowman and I were here November 18th, at which time we met with the finance committee and the full council. And that portion of that was to explain our mission as the Humane Society and what we do. And also to ask the City of Wilmer if they would continue supporting our programs at the Hot Creek Animal Shelter and to utilize our services. I do not, and I, and I think I may have also said at that meeting that we appreciate your donation. Well, you know, I, I do not think that our request was for a donation from the city. I think that word is wrong, but rather it's a, it's a request to be reimbursed for the services that we do provide. I think that is much more accurate. And so, this was just brought to, to my mind this evening that I would like to request that, that some point here, you consider placing the Humane Society of Candy Ojai County and Meeker County in a separate line item, perhaps, in your budget, so that we are not included, you know, with a group of, or the community group as we were this year. And perhaps your line item could be something to the effect of animal control within the city. You know, it might make it just a little less, a little more clear for us and, and perhaps for you guys, too. What I am going to do is ask our Board of Directors to draft a contract for services. And this would be a doc, document, obviously, that would be acceptable to you, to both parties. But I think it, this, this way, we could all go about doing the businesses that we do best and, and make it a little more binding, perhaps, and it, it would help us in our budgeting in the future. So, we'll be looking at that and discussing this with you. So, thank you very much. That's it?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, at this particular time, I think we'll take a, a break and we'll have the wisdom and the knowledge of Mr. Councilman Anderson to take over for me because I have to leave. But by all means, let's take a 10-minute break and we'll go from there.
A discussion regarding Resolution 44 for the purchase of land from Jenny O. Turkey Store by the Wilmer Municipal Utilities for development of a substation. Charlene, did you want to start us out on that and then introduce our guest?
Sure, I can. At the last council meeting, the council requested additional information regarding the action of the Wilmer Municipal, Wilmer Municipal Utility regarding one of their resolutions, Resolution Number 44. Resolution Number 44 dealt with the action of the Wilmer Municipal Utilities to, to enter into a purchase agreement between itself and Jenny O. Turkey Store Incorporated for the land acquisition of 47.8 acres in the amount of $352,000 for the Priam Substation. Mr. Wesley Hopp, the general manager for the Wilmer Municipal Utilities, is present this evening to address the city council and respond to questions. And after that time, the council has a couple of actions available to itself. It could accept the resolution of the utility. It could veto the action of the utility. And I believe, based upon the action that the council took, which was to act it within 30 days, the council could actually delay action until your meeting on the 15th. And that's, the city, city attorney is indicating I'm correct on that. So, you can act this evening, or you can act at your subsequent meeting, December 15th, and still be within your 30-day timeline. And with that, I think it would be appropriate for Mr. Hopp to come forward and address the council.
Wes, would you come, come up, please?
I think there's a, and then there's a graphic up on the screen, too, to assist you in understanding location.
Thank you, Charlene, city council. I was gonna just stand and answer questions, but I should probably give you some background on what we did and why we're going about this. Now, I didn't see any discussion or hear anything about that, whether we have a need for the substation. Is that an issue yet? Anybody have any, okay.
I have a question. Who requested it?
The substation?
Yeah.
Okay, that was...
Any businesses in town?
Oh, no. It was a long time...
Were there any conversations from other business people to you or any individual in your department threatening that if we were not to build a substation, they'd buy power from another source? Is that true?
No, sir.
So, then the person I talked to was lying?
I didn't hear it myself.
None, none of your employees?
That has come to me. No, sir.
Thank you.
What happened, our timeline was in about 2005. We recognized that we needed another strong source of power to the City of Wilmer, in addition to our main source of power that is coming in from south of town. We have two high-voltage lines that terminate there. And then we, within a couple of years, had a tornado that narrowly missed that. And that was the third tornado in the 25 years that I've been here that narrowly missed the main power source for the county. So, we worked with our transmission provider, Great River Energy. They also have assets within that. They also serve the Candy Ojai Co-op from there, as well as other places throughout the grid. And we came to a decision that we needed to do something different and add another source. In mid-2000s, they did buy a piece of land near Green Lake for a substation. Subsequently, we did a study, a very detailed study, and that would have been, that source up there by Green Lake would have been most, one of the more expensive substations or solutions to our problem. We came up with a much more cost-effective one, which is a combination of a line from Haynesville to Howick and then this substation. Great River Energy has already done their piece, Haynesville to Howick. We have had in our budget since probably 2012, on a forward-looking basis, this substation planned. And so, as we finished the study and went to look at the most cost-effective place, Priam did end up being that, that area. So, once you get zoned in on an area, then you look at access to the road, how reliability, how reliable it is to get there, if you're able to maintain security. Because once you get into the grid and at that type of voltage, security becomes very important. You may have heard some things about substation security. It's important to us. You also need access to transmission lines. They're very expensive on a per-mile basis. And you also have to look in the electrical line. That's why we have these smart engineers that do the work. I, I've never been up to there, but I have got people who do that. They look at electrical losses, the I squared Rs and everything that goes into the design of a substation and the location. And you look at the least amount of impact to the surrounding area. If, is it a good neighbor? What's the noise? Transmission line crossing, visual, et cetera. Integration costs, present use and possible future use of the area. And looking for a landowner that you're willing to, that is willing to sell. And is it economically and electrically beneficial to the users, not only Wilmer Utilities, but the Co-op and also the grid? Everybody is gonna be involved in this particular substation and will be affected by it. And then you also have to look at your permitting requirements, railroad, MINDOT, Candy Ojai Highway, zoning, St. John's Township, and then the transmission grid operator, MISO. So, we started in 2010. We had also put some activity in 2013 for a study that went through MISO. And as a result of that, we have that accepted. So, there's a stu, there's a substation. We identified a piece of land that had transmission on it at the high voltage, 115 KV. It was relatively close to Wilmer, but far enough away to try to keep it away from a common natural disaster and give us a little bit of separation. It also provided us with not a very long stretch of lower voltage 69 KV line, which is what serves all of our substations throughout Wilmer and into the Candy Ojai County. So, as a result of those pieces, we looked at, we're looking at places that would work. There was a perfect spot, according to the engineers, and it ended up, this site here, this 11.8 acres shown on this map, that... acres shown on this map, that we could fit a substation and all of the things that required in it. What we're looking at right now is a fairly basic substation, but the next piece, the next slide, you would be able to show what the projected layout is. It doesn't need a lot of space right now, but within 30 years, all the rest of those pieces would be installed in there and make, it would make a very robust substation, as well as one that can serve load well into the future. We don't put anything in for two years, or four years, or even 20 years. We put in things for 50 years. We put in foundations that will not move for very long periods of time, because this is a very important piece of infrastructure. And that's another reason we chose this site. Once we chose it, then we found out who owned it. We didn't really care who owned it until we found that piece out, until we got all the other criteria taken care of. We found that Jenny O. Turkey Stores did own that. We had an assessment done on the 12 acres. And then we discovered that it was adjoined with the rest of the lot. So, we had it reassessed after they said that there would be no purpose for them. If the barns were gone, they would not be able to do any other work for raising turkeys. So, we offered for the entire land. And that's where you got the, instead of the 12-acre piece, add the 48-acre piece at the higher cost, but also a lower cost per acre. This is adjacent to Highway 23. Its value, carved out of the rest of it, is a lot higher all by itself on a per-acre basis than the entire property. They are willing to entertain another offer. Whether they're going to accept it or not remains to be seen. When you get to a smaller parcel of that size, you go from agricultural to commercial property. And I'm not sure if any, I'm not a real estate expert, but anybody who works in commercial properties, the value of a commercial acre is significantly different than the value of agricultural acre. And we, to follow through on the substation for the infrastructure support, we need to pay whatever that price was to make sure that did happen, to maintain the integrity of the grid that serves Wilmer. Unless somebody else decides that we have, they have a better idea that we can follow through on, this is the direction we're going. Does it necessarily have to be the 12 acres right there? No, we can go somewhere else. It would take longer and cost more. We have looked at some options, and we could do that. And it's up to you folks, I guess, if you want to ask some questions on details on that right now.
Councilmember Dawkins?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna ask the same question again. What is so magical about 48 acres? Would they not have sold us a smaller amount? And if not, why would they not have sold us?
I addressed that earlier. I said that we asked for the 12 acres, but it's all adjoined with the rest of the farm. There's nothing else that they own in that vicinity except those 48. And they're not interested in separating them out. They have no use, that they told us, for the remaining if they carved out the 12 acres.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes?
What would be your plan for the rest of the acreage that you wouldn't need? Would you keep more than the specific 12, or is that all your intentions are to use at any point in time?
Our initial intentions are to utilize the 12 acres best as we can. As a triangular, you see that we're able to get most of it in there. There's nothing saying that we can turn around and sell the rest to somebody who may be interested. I have actually received a call of interest already. Obviously, there's no details whatsoever. There may be other functions for it, too. Right now, it's just grazing land. And we have no intention on taking that person's fence down there, leasing it from Jenny O. right now as grazing land.
I have a question of the city attorney. You know, whenever we have a discussion of anything having to do with Jenny O., my former employer was Hormel Foods, which owns Jenny O. Turkey Store, and I want to make sure, I want to get the city attorney's opinion again. Do you consider that I would have any type of conflict of interest with discussing or voting on this subject?
Councilmember Anderson, based on the discussions we've had, I don't believe that's the case. I don't believe you do have a conflict of interest. The only way you would is if the action, the council were taking, I guess, to approve the, or not veto the Utilities Resolution, would result in a personal financial benefit to you. And I don't understand that to be the case.
That is not true.
Needs me to believe that's the case. So, with that said, I don't believe you have a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. I just want that clarified and made public, because there are those that don't seem to understand that. Okay. Councilmember DeBleek?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Protem Anderson. Wes, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities is a tax-exempt city entity. You pay in lieu of taxes to the city, in tune of about $2.5 million a year. And you also pay all of our street lighting costs, which are about $800,000 per year. But that does not mean you pay, do not pay taxes. If this piece of property is purchased, would you not pay taxes on it?
The 12 acres that will be occupied by the substation will be removed from tax rolls. The remaining will continue to be taxed as any other agricultural land that is out there. We presently own some acres behind Menards. That is being taxed right now. It's being farmed. We had to buy that, apparently, prior to my coming here, to be able to put a couple of transmission poles across that land. So, we were able to purchase it, and it's been used for agricultural purposes since.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. In real estate, it's location, location, location. And that's why you picked this, because it's Highway 23, and it's close to Wilmer.
More importantly, it's adjacent to the high-voltage lines. Got an estimate on what one mile of 115,000-volt line costs. It's $385,000. That's in excess of the entire property, if we had to move it one mile away from the 115,000-volt line.
And it's zoned agricultural now?
That's my understanding.
It's gonna be your responsibility to get it rezoned.
That's correct.
And if you let Jenny O. do it, then the price could go up dramatically per acre, if they had it zoned industrial or commercial.
You know real estate better than I, sir.
Yeah. And I think the council was upset because we heard it was $9,000 an acre for the 48. But actually, it's $7,000 in that range?
Seven thousand three hundred.
Okay. And the remaining 30 acres is not being tilled now. It's just grazing. Is that where the turkeys grazed in their pasture?
Apparently, there were range birds out there. And so, there's old facilities out in that pasture, along with the animals.
Okay. So, it could be tillable land?
If it were cleaned up.
Okay.
And as part of our purchase of this land, those things will be cleaned up, as well as all the buildings removed and the foundations removed. So, we have bare land to start our foundation on.
So, is there a long-term contract with the existing farmer that's using it?
It's an annual contract right now.
Okay. All right. And then, this is not tax dollars that you're buying this with. It's revenue from the municipal utilities.
That's correct. Wilmer Utilities is not a taxpayer, is not supported by taxpayers or supported by ratepayers. In fact, Wilmer Utilities is the single largest taxpayer in the City of Wilmer, by virtue of being the enterprise function. And so, all that we do is supported by our rates. And because it's transmission, our transmission investment is being shared by everybody else on the grid. We have a bill, excuse me, about a $2 million a year bill for transmission use. And because we have invested in some transmission facilities in previously, we get about $1.6 million in revenue from that same transmission operator. As we invest more into the transmission system, our return on those investments comes back in the form of credits for our transmission bills. And so, the more we invest in transmission assets, the more we are going to get credits back. We will always get bills for transmission for getting the power to Wilmer. And those bills are gonna go up 15% to 20% per year for the foreseeable future. If anybody's been on I-94 and they see those huge steel towers, and they're putting transmission lines on there, everybody from Hudson Bay to the Gulf of Mexico is helping pay for that. And we are part of that grid that is actually supporting that. And so, our bills are gonna go up regardless of what kind of transmission investments we do put in. If we put nothing in, our rates will still go up. If we put something in, we will get actually back. It's the difference between a renter and an owner. If you own a house or you rent a house, you're actually building up some sort of equity. So, it's not all Wilmer Utilities paying for this.
And the same thing is for the wind turbines. There was no tax dollars. It's revenue.
It's revenue.
Yeah. Because we hear it all the time, taxpayers paid for it. No, it's the users of the utilities.
That's correct.
And then, if you're in the city limits, you have to have power from the utilities, unless there's a small portion that REA services yet?
Not within the city limits.
Okay. And you can't buy, no one in town can buy from Otter Tail, or NSP, or XL, or whatever, for electricity.
That's correct.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Just the comments that you're making, assuming that the commission and the staff, the recommendation to purchase this, would you just speak to why you think this is the best piece again, one more time?
Okay. Because of the study, because of the transmission assets that are adjacent to the property, because of the nearness of the rest of the construction that we'd need to do, and also the physical separation from our existing substation, you add all those pieces together, and that's, that came down, and those were the qualifying criteria to find that spot. There are other places, yes, we can look at those, but they would also be more expensive, just by virtue of adding more miles of transmission line. And then that would increase the electrical losses, too. And those happen 24/7, that we all have to pay for, because of, that's just longer lines.
Okay. Thank you for your clarification.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Protem, Mayor. Wes, the transmission line here that you want to have closeness to, proximity to, that doesn't run by any other nearby properties that are also adjacent to the highway here, or, I mean...
Of course it does, yes. There's, it runs along through Priam, and it continues along Highway 23 for probably a couple miles before it leaves 23 and heads due west. And what that does, if you move south and west down Highway 23, that increases the number of miles of the 69,000-volt line that we need to construct to tie back in to support our system. Because the main reason we're putting this there is for system reliability. And that's, you need to connect back into our other lower high-voltage system, which is at 69,000. And a 69,000-volt line is estimated at about $230,000 a mile.
And you've already got close proximity to that at this location?
We're as close as we, our engineers are comfortable with, and still staying far enough away from the other substation to keep from a common disaster. It's all odds, you know. You could have one disaster that you didn't plan for, but we're trying to do the most cost-effective way we can.
I think one of the concerns, at least one of mine was, and I think of some of the other council members, was the subsidy that was granted to Jenny O. by the City of Wilmer. And I'm just curious to know, and then, of course, we come up where we need something from them, and we're, you know, they won't give us just 12 acres. They want to sell, well, maybe that's an option now. But my question would be, did any, during the negotiations for this location, acquiring an interest there, whether it's 12 acres or 47, was there any discussions in those negotiations about the subsidy Wilmer had granted, and that they felt any obligation, or why they wouldn't give us a better price? Because it seems like we're right at market price here. I mean...
That was our requirement, was we had to have an assessment. And that was based on three factors, of which one was the market price. And so, the value was determined that way through a licensed assessor or certified assessor. As far as the discussion between the land in front of their office extension, as opposed to this, or tying those two together, they were different animals. My understanding that I, there was no mechanism to tie the two together, whether it's through their corporate or otherwise.
So, it was never brought up?
It was asked, and there wasn't, it wasn't an issue that they said the two would be together.
So, they took the position that that didn't make any difference with these, with the negotiations for this 12 acres then?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? Are we done?
Yeah, that's all. Thank you. Thanks, Wes.
I just have one question.
Yes, Councilman Rahm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Thanks for being here tonight. As far as the usage of the substation, a catastrophic disaster like a tornado came through and cuts down our electrical lines into our community, we have, we have the portable generators, correct? And I don't know, what percentage, just out of curiosity, is it 10, maybe 15% of the capabilities that we have with those generators to produce?
Depending on the needs of the community, the diesel generators that we have are able to support roughly 30% of our load.
And there's never been any cost comparison in adding more generators?
We are presently working on a local generation study. It's going to ask that very question, and many others. And hopefully, we'll have a long-term plan for local generation here in the city within six to 12 months.
Just curiosity, so by putting up more generators, that's not gonna help us in case of a catastrophic disaster, and we have a tornado come through? Would that suffice until the tower power gets put back on or patched back together again? I don't know what the timeframe is, or how long that takes, depending on the severity, I'm sure. Many obstacles there to think about.
Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty open question, because it depends on the disaster, what gets damaged, how quickly we can recover from those. But having your own generation in town, and diesel generation, obviously, is extremely expensive to run. The machines themselves are not that expensive relative to 24/7 generators. However, the fuel is extremely expensive even now. And that would be a great emergency, and has been a great emergency and peak shaver for us. But as far as depending on any long-term, we'd have to find some other way. It depends on what gets damaged. Certain pieces of the transmission system could take years to rebuild, and others, a couple of days. So, it's a big range. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
I had another question I forgot to ask. Let me think here, look at my notes. Was there been any thought given to proceeding by eminent domain for just the 12 acres?
Of course, we have. Because there was no, I guess they didn't reject the offer, so we didn't go down that path. Once they reject the offer, then you have to go to the next step, I would assume, if you continue wanting that land. We haven't gone there, so we haven't worked on that eminent domain piece. My understanding is that just for court... My understanding is that just for court costs alone, it's 25,000 to 50,000 dollars, and the results generally are not in the favor of the utility. Working on eminent domain, as a result, the per-acre price would probably be inflated.
Yeah, but it'd only be 12 acres versus 47, of course, I mean, but as far as the time commitment, or the, you know, the time involved in an eminent domain proceeding, how would that affect your, your, you know, your plans for this project?
This project would probably have to be delayed, not one, but probably two years.
Okay. Is that, I mean, do you see that as a serious problem, a delay of that length?
I do. We have, we have commitments that we need to fulfill. You know, nothing's impossible, Councilmember Johnson.
I'm, I'm relying on, those are just questions I have, and I, you know, but I appreciate your answers, and I'm comfortable with those. Thanks, Wes.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Thanks, Wes, for being here tonight, for clearing up several misunderstandings. It was suggested earlier that the, the utilities, the revenue comes from ratepayers, and not the city. However, doesn't the city own the utilities?
The city does, through the charter, and that's why I'm in front of you, every time we have a city, or a utility commission meeting, the minutes are then subjected to the city council scrutiny and approval.
And the city is comprised of people that elect all of us up here, homeowners, property owners, that live and pay taxes in Wilmer. So, indirectly, the city owns the utilities, and it's, the funds that come to the utilities is under the guise of the, the city. I mean, we can, we approve your purchases, and something like this. So, we're representing the public.
That's correct.
That owns the utilities. Now, we just did a deal with Hormel several months back, where we gave money, we abated taxes, to the tune of, I believe is in excess of $3 million. The city did that. We represent the city, the taxpayers, we spoke for them, and did all this for Hormel. If we would have known this earlier, I would have suggested a land swap. You know, we give them $3 million bucks for $300,000, $40,000, whatever acres it is. Now, you alluded earlier to the fact that they are willing to accept an offer, or not accept, entertain another offer. I would suggest, on behalf of us, the representatives of the city, that you offer $1, and see where it goes. Jennie O. and Hormel has been good to the city, and vice versa, the city's been good to them. They employ a lot of people here, they spend a lot of money here in our city, they're going to expand here. I think, I think it proper to do that. I mean, we do that with the school system, the land, the building out there, we gave them for, I think it was for a buck. They've had a very profitable year, they're sharing their profits with their employees, and when you have a profitable year, write-offs are often looked at, and I think it would be a win-win situation for them, and for the city, and for the utility. That's my suggestion. I'd like to see what the rest of the council feels. I mean, I've had several phone calls and emails about this, saying, what are they doing? You know, we, we, should I say, bend over backwards for them to expand here, and then continue employing people here? I read in, I think it was the Sunday paper, where the Hormel Foundation gives and donates money, and in Austin, Minnesota, they, $3.2 million, they bought an old aged mall for the city, so that they could change it into smaller shops, and, I mean, it was falling to pieces, but their foundation donated $3.2 million. Now, I don't see anything wrong with going back to them, I'm assuming you're doing the negotiating for the property, for the land, or is it your board, is it the commissioners, or?
The day-to-day activity has been with our engineer and director of operations.
Okay. Maybe a request to the Hormel Foundation might be in order. At least, you said they're willing to offer, or entertain another offer. I, I think that needs to be done. I, I don't know if we, as a council, direct him to, to renegotiate, where do we go? Maybe Mr. Scott could answer that for us.
Councilmember Christensen, the council's opportunity in reviewing the utilities resolution is either to, by the affirmative votes of five members, overrule that resolution, which is just like vetoing it, which would undo everything the resolution did, and reject the purchase agreement, or not do that, in which case, the agreement will stand as approved by the Utilities Commission.
Now, at the last council meeting, my motion, as per Kevin's expertise, was to extend the, these minutes for 30 days, as I recall. It wasn't not, it was not to table it, it was to extend the minutes for 30 days. Now, I think I heard you say earlier that we could extend them another 30 days if we wanted to.
No, that's not what I, certainly not what I meant. What you did last meeting, as a council, was to give yourself a 30-day window to consider this resolution. So, rather than take action to overrule it, or not, at your meeting last time, you exercise your power under the charter to give yourself a 30-day window, and you're about halfway through it now.
So, we can't direct anything? It's either the motion, or their motion and their minutes, or it's either vetoed, or let it ride? We can't say go back and renegotiate? I mean, that seems awful silly.
My view, under the language of the charter, is what, the most you could do, I guess, would be to, again, not take, take action tonight, and take this up again at your next meeting on December 15th. I think that's still within your 30 days, that you extended it by your last meeting. So, you could certainly do that today.
In hopes that something else may be done?
Yes.
I mean, I, I believe I expressed that at our last council meeting, that maybe a renegotiation was in order, and I sent an email to our administrator, asking if anything had been done, and I got an answer back, saying that you would appear tonight, and that was it. So evidently, nothing has been done in the last two weeks. I think we're losing time here, if we only got two more weeks, or 15 days, to make a decision then. But I, hey, it's like Wayne Gretzky said, you don't, he'll guarantee you 100% of the shots you don't take in the net, don't go in. We need to take a shot. We, meaning the utilities, or yourself, I mean, to me, it's common sense, folks.
Councilmember Nelson?
I've heard enough explanations and reasons why I think this piece of land is the right piece of land. My question was regarding the necessity to purchase the extra acres versus the 12 acres, and I, and hearing, I think, what you've said about either continuing to lease it or selling it in the future probably offsets the cost, and I do feel that some of the things that Jennie O. is contributing to this, and that it was a fair assessment of the process. And so, I will make a motion to accept the action of the Wilmer Municipal Utility and approve Resolution Number 44.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the Resolution Number 44 now. Mr. Attorney, this action, what is, what does that take for votes? I know to, to reject that would take five votes. What, this is accepting the, the purchase. So, I'm, what do we got?
I think, Councilmember Anderson, a majority of the quorum of the council voting to approve that resolution would suffice. In other words, there are eight council members here, as you would still be voting, it would take five votes to approve it. But having said that, the only thing that can undo it at this point would be actually an affirmative vote of five to overrule, so.
Right.
You could just not do anything, I guess, and it would still take effect. It takes a affirmative vote of five council members here tonight to undo the Utilities Resolution.
So, it would, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. So, in essence, this motion doesn't mean anything, technically. I mean, and...
It would signal the council's affirmative approval of the resolution. Legally, it does not, it's not necessary for this resolution of the utilities to take effect.
Well, I, for one, can't support that motion, for the fact that, why wouldn't we take another shot? Why wouldn't, why wouldn't the we, the representatives of the city of Wilmer, ask Mr. Homp to make a different, another offer, a lower offer? This is taxpayer money we're talking about. This isn't, this isn't your money or my money. This is taxpayers' money, and we're in charge of their purse strings, and, and as was alluded to earlier tonight, we haven't been doing a very good job, especially on our infrastructure. Maybe utility revenue money, but it's our constituents' dollars. I mean, they're, they're the ones that are paying the bills for this, and it would be, as a businessman, it would be very prudent to go back and make another offer.
Councilmember Nelson?
Just clarification, the options that were before us were to either accept or to veto, and my motion is, is basically the, to accept that. The Wilmer Utilities Commission has done their job, and just supporting their action. So, I don't believe that the, the concept of renegotiating is part of what we have the ability to do here right now. So, I guess that if they choose to go back and do that after we approve the, approve it, then that's their choice to do that. But I think what my motion is, is to put the, put the control back into their hands to, to make the, make those decisions.
Okay. Is there anything else? If not, we're going, we're going to vote on the motion to approve Resolution Number 44, which was the Wilmer Municipal Utilities action to purchase the property. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. You know, it was mentioned, our only options are this and that. Well, another option is to extend it to another 15 days, and then see what he does. We can approve it at the next council meeting, not a big deal. And if we don't, prove it is proved, I believe it goes into effect. Is that correct, Kevin?
If you didn't override by the next meeting.
So, so I would request that the motion be taken back.
You know, if there's, if there's reason to think that something is going to change, perhaps that makes sense. I don't, I have no way of knowing if that's going to be the case or not.
But they, they told them they'd entertain another motion, I mean, an, an offer. That's what I heard.
Were you preparing another offer, or what was, what was your thinking?
We asked them, as requested by Mr. Christensen earlier, to ask, carve out the 12 acres again to renegotiate, which we did. We asked them today, and they said they'd be willing to listen, or entertain that, which is what I just said. So, as opposed to follow-up, we would then discuss with them what that was. We are required by law to offer assessed value. $1 is not assessed value, I'm afraid. It's a good idea, a good theory, but it is not something that we are able to do. For that particular property, it has to be of assessed value, and we did pay for an assessor to look at not only the 12 acre originally, but also the, the rest of the parcel.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Protem. I was going to say that the DNR, when they buy land, they have to pay full market, and they usually pay a whole lot more from a private party. But I mean, if you're willing to go back and renegotiate a price for the total acreage, then we could do it in, at the next council meeting, otherwise, it just dies, and you can buy it for whatever.
Again, the, the offer was the assessed value only.
Appraised value?
Appraised value.
From your appraiser or their appraiser?
Our appraiser. They accepted our appraiser's value.
Did you see their appraisal?
They didn't have one that I know of.
They didn't show you one, so, okay.
So, they accepted that, as well as the conditions to clean everything out, all the way down, including the utilities that were there, as well as the foundations, to our satisfaction. So, we can inspect it, and go out there and make sure that it's ready for our construction.
And that costs money to do, too.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'm sorry to keep bugging you, Wes, but I, I just have some comments here on where we're at. I mean, it's, you've got, you're kind of waiting on a response from them right now on, on 12 acres, as I understand your comments. They said they, they were willing to look at that, and they're going to let you know.
The offer on the table right now is what you are entertaining, what you are holding off on.
Yeah, I understand that.
What we next, we are asking them, if you folks decide that it is not an offer that is valid, that we can follow through on, because we started talking to them, I think, in January of this year. If that is vetoed, they are willing to entertain that 12 acre.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, for one, interested in vetoing that action tonight, but I am interested in, you know, we've got another 14, 15 days till our next meeting, if we wanted to veto it. If we don't do anything tonight, and we don't do anything then, the deal holds, assuming there's been no counter offer that's worked out, so we don't interfere with the progress of the thing really a whole lot. So, I'm kind of, it seems to me like it makes sense to wait and see.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just clarification, if, if I'm tracking with this correctly, so if, if we go back to the 12 acres, would it then be zoned differently, and perhaps have a different purchase price attached to it? What do you see changing if you go to the 12 acres versus the other piece?
The price per acre will go up.
Do you see this as, if you purchase that additional land and sell it, that you can recoup, recoup some of the, the costs with this? And, I mean, you've negotiated with them to, you said, clear it, and remove, and basically have it ready to go for you, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, I'll ask you, as, in your knowledge, as the general manager, what is your request of this city council? I, I feel like it's a, I'll quit with that and let you ask. I mean, I've heard from other staff, no one asks staff what we think. Well, here's the opportunity. What do you think? I value your opinion. What do you think?
Thank you. We brought this to our planning commission, our planning committee throughout this year, and mentioned what we were doing. We brought it to our commission, the staff recommended purchase of this land at the appraised value. That was going to be also cleaned up, and that is my recommendation, that is my request here, is to continue on that track, approve it, and we'll move forward. What we will do with that land, that we don't need, we already have had, like I had said before, offers to purchase that, and that would make a big difference in the final cost. There are people out there very willing to look at purchasing that land. We haven't gone there because we haven't finished this process yet. We'd be putting the cart before the horse if we did. Thank you.
Okay. I think, I think it's, it's time to vote on this. Let's do a roll call, Kevin. Does everybody understand what we're voting on? It's to approve, the motion is to approve Resolution 44. Councilmember Christensen, and then I want to do the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I want to understand this completely from what Mr. Scott said earlier. The motion that's made is to approve Resolution Number 44. If it, if it dies, that doesn't mean this is gone, because we haven't vetoed it.
Right.
Right?
It will be approved automatically in two weeks.
If we vote against it, it's still, it's on, still on the record.
That is correct. My reading of the charter is that you had, at your last meeting, the option to extend your consideration of that resolution by either 30 days or to the next council meeting, and the motion was to extend it for 30 days. I think if you approve the motion to accept Resolution 44, that will end it, and the council will have affirmatively accepted it. If that motion fails, then nothing has happened. You still are within your 30 days, and you could, in theory, still veto it at your next meeting.
Okay. Let's vote.
Councilmember Johnson.
No.
Dawkin.
No.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
No.
Ammon.
No.
Nelson.
Aye.
4-4.
So we're, we are, we will be, I'm, I'm gonna suggest that we bring this back up at the next meeting.
I'll second that.
I mean, I think that's a, that's, I don't know that we need a motion on that. We didn't do anything here tonight, so I suggest we bring it to the next meeting and finalize it. I mean, we either finalize it, or it, it happens.
The hope is, what you did is gain a bit more understanding of what we're doing here.
Absolutely. It was time very well spent. And thank you for spending your evening with us, Wes.
Would you like me back next time?
Sure. It probably wouldn't hurt.
Mayor Protem.
We'll try to, we'll try to put you a little further up the agenda next time.
Yes.
Actually, it makes it hard when they accept it.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'd suggest you bring your, your commission with, too, and staff.
We have one here.
I know.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just make a quick open forum comment? We, I mean, no, open forum is passed.
That's, yeah, okay. We're gonna move on, on the agenda to the Community Development Committee meeting. As soon as Mr. Fagerly is ready, we'll call on Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Meeting was called to order at 4:45 on Tuesday, November 25. Item two is public comments. There was no public comments. Item three, Donner Oil Air Tax Abatement, and this is a motion. Staff presented the formal request by William Donner and Oil Air Products for tax abatement. The abatement is requested to partially offset increased real estate taxes resulting from a move by Oil Air Products from Litchfield to Wilmer. Staff was recommending an eight-year decreasing abatement on the city portion of taxes as follows. Years one through three, 100 percent. Years four through six, 75 percent. And years seven through eight, 50 percent. The tax abatement, as recommended, would be a pass-through from the building owner, Donner, to the company Oil Air Products. Steve Rehnquist, EDC Director, spoke about the value of the jobs and the benefits of increased payroll in the local economy. Doug Fenster, local realtor who has been involved with the project, said that the company plans to spend over $80,000 on improvements. Committee inquired about initial employee numbers and the future for job growth. Mr. Rehnquist said there would be nine employees initially, and at least 13 within a couple of years. Due to the size of the facility, there's great room for expansion, and the company plans to grow in Wilmer. Mr. Fenster said the company has discussed building a new facility in Wilmer in the future because of the proximity to its products and users. Candyoye County has already approved the abatement contingent upon the city approving the abatement. A motion was made and seconded and passed to set a public hearing on the tax abatement for December 15, 2014. And I'll introduce that motion.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second to set a public hearing on the tax abatement for the Donner Oil Air situation for a December 15 discussion.
I'll just say it's the old Pomada Building. It's used as Donner Air right now.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Question.
Oh.
Discussion.
Yeah, I asked if there was any.
Yeah, he kept talking, so.
Okay, what have you got?
Well, where's the audits and financial performance and five-year capital plan for his business plan? Has any of that information been given or presented to this council? And has there been any denial from any banks? And where's the proof showing that this individual does not have the capabilities of funding this $22,000 over that period on his own? Where's the business plan?
Councilmember Ammon, members of the council, in this particular case, the request for tax abatement was not premised on the company demonstrating need. I believe that Mr. Rehnquist made that very plain in his presentation. The request by the company is for tax abatement to allow them to adjust to an increased level of real estate taxes between what they are currently paying in another community in a smaller facility and the taxes they would be paying in a Wilmer facility of much larger size. In this particular case, there was no financials presented because they were not claiming that they needed the tax abatement to do anything other than offset the real, the increase in real estate taxes. So there's really no need to advance this project. With that, with that request for information, I did not believe it was necessary. If they said we can't operate without it because we don't have the financial capabilities to do so, they've not said that. They've simply requested it to make it a level playing field or to level the playing field to their current facility.
According, Mr. Mayor, or Mayor Protem, according to state statutes on tax, the but-for test applies. In this case, if this does not, I mean, for the protection of the citizens and for equality for all's paying our fair share of taxes, how does this qualify, or how does this pass the but-for test? We don't have any of the information showing that he is not capable of doing this without the tax.
This is a tax abatement, not a tax increment financing request. There is no but-for test on the tax abatement statute.
But either, either way, Bruce, and this philosophical thing, but either way, as the elected, we're supposed to be responsible, make sure everybody pays their fair share in the community. I also question the high-quality jobs at $12 an hour. $12 an hour is not a high-quality job. If it was $25, $27 an hour, I'd be all, all on this, and I encourage this, this individual to expand his business here. But I think this is nothing more than a rent subsidy, and I don't, with a leaser. And I don't, I don't see that as a major stakeholder in the community. If he owns the building, he owns the property, he pays taxes on it with his own pen and paper, that's a different story. Now we're looking at subsidized rents for businesses. I can't support that. Thank you.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I just want to make sure that I'm clear here. This is just for a hearing.
That's right.
So at the hearing, maybe Mr. Rehnquist can be here and explain a little more, and I mean, it's, we need to hear it, and then we can make some arguments for and against it.
That's correct. You are just setting the hearing this evening.
Okay.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just clarification, this was brought up and approved at a community development meeting to go ahead and take a look at this initially. All of the things, those things were discussed at that time. Then it went back to the community development with the information. So I guess I'm really questioning the process that we're going through if we get to this point in time and we're asking the questions that we're asking now, because I think that information has been available, was it two months at least?
Not that long.
Not that long? Month and a half? I, I'm really questioning what we're doing at our committee meetings if we're getting to this point and doing these things. Disappointed.
Okay. We have a motion on the table.
Mr. Mayor.
To, talking about setting the hearing? I'm not, I don't think we're gonna get philosophical here. We're just setting the hearing.
Why should we set a hearing to something that's gonna pay $12 an hour? Let's kill it right now. It's time for us to take, take and send a strong message that we have the third highest concentration of welfare recipients per capita in the state of Minnesota and Candyoye County. Are we proud of that?
Do we know that that's fact?
If this is economic development, I don't see it as economic development. I look at it as a red subsidy, rent subsidy to the owner. Why are we even talking about this? At the Community Development Committee meeting many months ago, I brought in different application forms, presented to the council people that were present at that meeting for their consideration to look at it and to staff. An application form showing all the information, are there other government programs that he's eligible for, this individual is eligible for, through the state of Minnesota? He may be. So now we're looking at all these tax subsidies, we don't know, and we're trying to make a good decision. It's the same process, guys. We're back here again, and I'm gonna keep nailing it every time I can when I see anybody coming up here asking for a tax break without showing due documentation. It has not been shown, it has not been proven, it will not be proven unless we ask for it. Because 16 questions, 20 questions were asked from staff to respond to the last one, and I got a question response back, I've never had any, but why do you want to know that? Nobody's ever asked these questions before. Yet in other communities throughout the state and nation, we have a tremendous amount of debate on what it is called economic development, and in most cases, this stuff can be done on its own. It doesn't need the taxpayer's help. It's a handout or a pat on the back for a good job, well-done business. And it can be used for political reelection purposes also, to be on the side of being Republican or Democrat, or pro-growth or not pro-growth. And it's not that, it's about due diligence.
Point of order.
Well, I just want to make a point, that your comments and this information that it went through committee is absolutely absurd, because it hasn't gone through committee, and, and now I have to sit here, because I'm not on the committee, and ask and play 20 questions. What I'm saying is, I'm tired of this. I'm tired of asking 20 questions.
We are gonna stop this discussion and have a discussion on whether we're gonna set the public hearing, but I will make it a point that we did have a discussion and asked if this individual should, should go ahead and proceed with this, and the council said yes. All right, let's vote on setting the public hearing for December 15. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion passes. It will be a public hearing on December 15. Councilmember Fagerly.
Just a comment there. It did go through the committee.
Yes, it did.
And they bank at United Prairie Bank and Lake Region Bank. They're gonna spend 80-some thousand.
Point of order, we already dealt with the motion.
Renovate where they want.
Point of order, we already dealt with the motion.
Okay, item four, construction update. Staff presented a construction update to the committee. At the end of October, the total construction valuation was approximately $46,500,000 for 2014 projects so far. Projects and plans that are in-house are expected to boost that total to above $60 million by the year end. The majority of the construction in 2014 has been commercial and industrial, with those valuations exceeding $39 million at the end of October. Item five, old business, downtown garbage. Councilmember Johnson raised the issue of garbage violation enforcement in the central business district. Several problem properties are again violating the municipal code sections dealing with garbage storage and collection. The problem has been compounded by the recent snowfall and errant parking from which has kept garbage trucks from assessing the dumpsters and garbage cans at certain locations. Staff suggested a small group sit down to review the municipal code to try to identify weak points in the enforcement process, and Councilman Johnson said he would also discuss the matter with the city attorney. Item six, new business. The upcoming grand openings of Aldi and Taco Bell were mentioned. Aldi opening is set for 9 o'clock AM on Thursday, December 11, 2014. The final date for the Taco Bell opening was not available at the time of the meeting. There being no further business to come before the committee, the meeting was adjourned at 6 o'clock. And I'll move to file the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes. Okay. Going back, new business, there was nothing mentioned prior, so no new business, any old business? Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Just an update on the sign that was damaged or destroyed north of Wilmer, Welcome to Wilmer. What's going on there? Is there, is it in a settlement, or is there, every time I drive by there, coming into Wilmer, I wonder what's going on?
Councilmember Christiansen and Mayor Protem, we're currently in the process of contacting sign builders, manufacturers, however, whatever term you want to use, to get that replaced. And insurance has been contacting us to get them the bills, so at this time, we're moving forward with that. The base is still in place and intact, so we should be able to put a sign that matches the other four at this point at that location.
I had brought up at an earlier meeting, maybe rethinking the size and the sign. It appeared awful small. I remember, I remember when we approved them years back, and, you know, we saw them on paper, but we didn't see the size of it. You know, you didn't see that it was four by eight or whatever. And I drive, every time I come back from the cities, I drive to Atwater, and they got this great big, you know, it's five times the size of Welcome to Wilmer. And New London, or Spicer has a similar one out there that's, it takes up quite a bit of space, and it really is a welcoming sign. I would like it maybe to go to community development, because I think it's where it came from, when we originally did it, and maybe rethink it. If I'm not mistaken, the signs were designed, was it by Quick Signs, or?
I, I don't have that information with me at this time.
But you'll put it on the community.
We can certainly put it on a community development agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
For discussion and alternatives.
All right, Councilmember Nelson.
Yes, I think when we talked about this before, I believe the signs were done by the Community Marketing Coalition Partners, and they were all done to match. And I don't remember the timeframe that it was done, but I guess it was not something, I think the city of Wilmer contributed $10,000 out of $83,500. So I, I think if insurance can replace it, it's probably a good thing to do, and if we get to a point where they need to be replaced, they should all match, so.
Okay, we'll send that there. If there's nothing else, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Announcement.
Announcement of committee.
Oh, announcement of committee meetings. How could I, we aren't adjourned. Finance committee will meet next, next Monday, which would be the seventh, the eighth.
December 8.
December 8 at 4:45.
Public Works, Public Safety, the 9th, Tuesday, 4:45.
Wednesday, Labor Relations.
Next Wednesday?
December 10.
Okay, okay. Community Development?
December 11, Thursday, 4:45.
All four days.
Mayor Protem.
Is there anything else? Councilmember Nelson.
The League of Minnesota Cities has two webinars coming up in December. I think they both would be valuable for us to listen to. The one is December Budget Forecast and the 2015 Legislative Outlook for Cities, and the other one is the Four Es of Great Governance. I'm wondering if we could ask that the city staff would set that up and put out an invitation to the council and the new, new members also to attend.
We can do that.
Good idea. I looked at that, too. Okay. All right, now, if there's nothing else.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're adjourned.